Well, to order the regular city council meeting scheduled for February fifth, two thousand and twenty four, please call the roll.
Mayor Schwartz.
Here.
Member Karen. Member Chaney Huggett.
Here.
Member Gates. Member Traver.
Yeah.
Member Underhill.
Here.
Member Wolfersberger.
Here.
We have quorum, your honor.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to excuse Councilmember Gates and Councilmember Karen.
The move?
Motion by Councilmember Wolfersberger, supported by Councilmember Underhill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both names aye. Motion carries. That brings us to invocation. We don't have the pastor here this evening. Uh, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. That brings us to our approval of the agenda. Under item six, we have public comment on agenda items. Persons addressing city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon. Excuse me, I have a little cold. When called upon by the mayor, um, she'll be speaking on agenda items only. Public hearing items will be addressed during the public hearing. Followed by seven consent agenda. We have our city council minutes. Followed by city bills. Under C, city drug and alcohol testing policy. And that would be appendix B update. Item D, two thousand and twenty four County Park Village report. Item E, electric department bucket truck purchase. Then that brings us down to item ten, public hearing and subsequent council action. Under A, July first, two thousand and twenty four. To June thirtieth, two thousand and thirty, capital improvement program. That'd be our CIP adoption. Um, no old business. Under twelve reports and recommendations. We have item A, two thousand and twenty four, small urban engineering contract. Item B, purchase of contractor and cable for major site extension. Item C, power plant units number two and number four, oxidation catalyst installation. Item D, cat peaking project, interconnection and lease agreements. Item E, fire code ordinance amendment. Under item F, fire inspection and emergency services cost recovery, fire inspections, ordinance amendment. Um, there are no appointments or elections. And item fourteen is public comment on non-agenda items. When called upon by the mayor, person speaking will give their name, address, and they have two minutes to speak. Followed by counsel and manager of communications, and then adjournment. Take a motion? To approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Of the agenda?
It's a nice agenda as presented.
Motion by Councilmember Wolfersberger, voted by Councilmember Chaney Huggett. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Sign. Motion carries. That brings us to item six, public comment on agenda items. Persons addressing city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon. Members of the public are limited to speaking for a maximum of three minutes. Anybody wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
More time, Barry Wayne Adams, six twenty two West Green Street. I guess on behalf of the citizenry, have to object to the way the minutes are constructed and then approved without any uh, critical discussion, particularly when one would think in a democracy where it's the people's voice that's to be heard. All you see in the minutes of public comment is that somebody made a public comment. Now, I would think that the whole idea of coming up and making a public comment is so that you guys can listen to the substance of the comment. And consider the substance of the comment and include the substance of the comment in your recording of the, of the minutes, but uh, it, it obviously shows it's, it's almost an arrogant exposition of the fact that you guys don't even care what the heck we have to say. And uh, you know, it's, it's kind of disappointing and it shows that the real effort in going through this political ritual is more to orchestrate a narrative rather than to actually show the nuts and bolts of how uh, republicanism is supposed to be exercised. And uh, the notion of premeditated orchestration is uh, very amply demonstrated in the uh, letters that uh, were found in the city council meeting packet of May first. Uh, I'll have to speak onto it as the next time, but again, uh, you know, the three minute limit is unconstitutional. Uh, there is no authority that supersedes Article one, section five, and the waiver of tort is still in effect. Uh, you have an implicit contract to uphold the, the constitution. When you don't uphold the constitution, then uh, you become liable for uh, five thousand dollars each instance and uh, we're up and above, it's been ongoing and we're up and above fifty thousand dollars now, but uh, again, that whole thing can be wiped by eliminating the three minute limit. That's all you gotta do, but we'll bump it up to over a hundred thousand dollars and then go over to federal court and uh, you know, they, they operate in quasi admiralty. They know what a waiver of tort is.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on agenda items? Seeing none, that brings us to item seven consent agenda. We have our, under A, city council minutes, regular session, January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four. B, city bills purchases on one twelve, two thousand and twenty four, in the amount of nine hundred and ninety seven thousand, four hundred and eighty nine dollars and twenty four cents. Purchases on one nineteen, two thousand and twenty four, in the amount of two hundred and fifty six thousand, sixty seven dollars and twenty seven cents. Purchases on one twenty six, two thousand and twenty four, the amount of forty eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty six dollars and forty seven cents. Purchases on one thirty, two thousand and twenty four, the amount of two hundred and thirty one thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. For a total of one million, five hundred and thirty three thousand, seven hundred and seventy two dollars and ninety eight cents. Under C, we have our city drug and alcohol testing policy, appendix B update. Under D, two thousand and twenty four County Park Village report. And under item E, our electric department bucket truck purchase. Take a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved? Support.
Have a motion by Councilmember Traver, supported by Councilmember Underhill. Any discussion? Seeing none, uh, please call the roll.
Member Wolfersberger?
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Member Chaney Huggett?
Yes.
Member Traver?
Yes.
Member Underhill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to item ten A, um, public hearing for July first, two thousand and twenty four through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty three, capital improvement program, which is our CIP adoption. Uh, William? Want to bring us up to speed?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, each year the state dictates that we thought a capital improvement program, um, and it's a six-year program that is not a budget program, but lays out projects moving forward and to make sure we're in line with you guys, with the other directors. And it also is a planning document that goes to the planning commission as well. Um, they saw it in their December meeting and approved it. We also took it to the, the DDA and LDFA board. And they did make some recommendations. We took those in and um, implemented those. And here we are now. Um, it's a I, I think you guys have had it for a few weeks now, so, and I didn't receive many questions on it, but um, each department, it goes through it and department head and their, their teams go through it and and work together to put it together. It's, it's pretty time consuming and I think it's, it's pretty thorough.
Okay, any, I'll go ahead and start the public hearing. This opens the public hearing for the July first, two thousand and twenty four through June thirtieth, two thousand and thirty, capital improvement, CIP adoption. Anybody wishing to speak? They do so for a maximum of three minutes. Yes, sir.
Again, Barry Wayne Adams, six twenty two West Green Street, going to make a public comment. Uh, from the information that we were just given, uh, somebody who pays taxes absolutely knows nothing more about what you're talking about before he actually came up and gave your informational uh, input. Uh, it's amazing how things can operate in the realm of ambiguity and vagueness uh, without ever feeling the necessity for specificity and uh, you know, going into the hard details as to uh, how you're spending our, our hard-earned money. And, you know, I know none of the particulars of this will be written down or put into the minutes. So I'm making the public comment. Uh, but again, you know, these kinds of operations are indicative, as I said before, of a system of corporate fascism. More concerned with the business dealings of a corporation rather than the actual real-world concerns of the community. You know, understandably, you know, entropy is in place and there's going to be a certain amount of capital deterioration, but what and where and why? Uh, rather than, you know, you got some paperwork, just like uh, at the last meeting, you know, the update on the uh, on the lawsuit. Uh, well, I've given you the paperwork. Well, you know, that's not a, really a public uh, discussion of, uh, of the issue. So, you know, it's sub rosa operation. Uh, how is anybody in town, you know, you see why there's nobody that comes in to, to sit into these meetings? Because you can't figure out hiding your hair of, of what's really going on. And uh, you know, that instills apathy and, you know, it, there, there has been an apathetic constituency around here for decades, but only because uh, uh, of a acquiescence that came out of frustration. But uh, you know, be a little more forthright, transparent, let us know what's going on. People would be appreciative of it. All right, I'll be back for the final lowdown.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on the two thousand and twenty four, uh, June thirtieth, two thousand and thirty, CIP? Seeing none? Close the public hearing, uh, council discussion?
Actually, I have two comments, Mr. Mayor. Um, first, this is the fourth time that I'm aware of that this information has been presented in a public meeting. Uh, and included in the public packet for consideration, uh, including the, the planning commission, uh, meetings and then our, our work session and then the meeting where we introduce this and approve the public hearing. So, um, this has been well-vetted in public. Um, second, I'd like to thank city staff. This is a, a very much a living document, uh, rolls from year to year. And I feel like we've got a good grasp on the priorities of what the city should be focusing on from this uh, from our capital needs and, and making sure that we don't really, um, you know, it's pretty rare nowadays we come up with a surprise here. So thank you to you all for, for all the work that goes into this. That's, thank you.
Any other discussion, questions?
Just a question on priority ranking. Is it a needs versus wants or a wants versus need? Are they both considered when you create a priority ranking?
There is a methodology that's involved with it. Um, I don't know, William, do you have the original, um, matrix that's utilized? When we hand this out to the directors, there's actually a matrix that's included with the packet on how to prioritize and um, develop that, that ranking system.
So if it's rated a one, it's, it's pretty much an immediate need. That is something that life expectancy of that product or um, its use is going to be up. And, and it has to be over that dollar amount to fit into a CIP. And then five being, hey, I'm putting it on the radar to letting you know down the road, we're going to have to have this done. It's, it's done for planning, right? And that's why we put it before the planning commission. Um, even go to the DDA and the LDFA was also part of that process and they have their costs involved with it as well. So I didn't want to speak out of turn, but that's how it was.
Oh, I, I can tell you speak from experience. You've done a CIP a few times, um, but, but, but there is a, a matrix and a formula on how those, those are developed. To be fair, say it's like a needs versus wants versus means. The needs always take priority over the wants. Ultimately, if that's the question that's being asked again, it, it is truly a planning document too, right? So, uh, as we begin to develop our fiscal year operating budget, we will look to this as our planning document when we start developing capital projects. Doesn't mean we have to take everything off this list and, and for the most part, we probably won't, but that's where we look first too, because we know it's been vetted by multiple different groups that have decided that these are the priorities. And again, if those groups look at those and decide that, well, what staff recommended as a one, we think so number three, we make that adjustment. And that was actually occurred at the LDFA DDA board. There was a priority that they felt that we should seize upon. I think it was some acquisition of some available property. So that was uh, given a higher ranking essentially.
And some of those change over years too with technology changes. So, yeah, when we're purchasing five years down the line, we're thinking we need to buy this. Well, there's changes and cost differences and they readjust, so. Um, and I do want to echo what Councilmember Wolfersberger said, uh, this is available to the public. It has been, um, published on those four different occasions. And um, is it on the web page as well, on the, on the website?
Uh, it's, it's located in all the agendas. We actually have a physical hard copy located here on second floor too.
And then once it's approved, it'll be on, on our, our website, so. Right, so there's many avenues that you can be informed and transparent. Um, any other further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the July first, two thousand and twenty four through June thirtieth, two thousand and thirty, capital improvement adoption.
So moved. Support?
Motion by Councilmember Wolfersberger, supported by Councilmember Traver. Uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Um, Councilmember Underhill?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolfersberger?
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz? Councilmember Chaney Huggett?
Yes.
Member?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. But, um, before you tonight, I have a engineering design contract that I would like to, um, award to ENG. And we issued uh, proposals for three different projects, um, proposals on engineering, design engineering for three different projects. The two thousand and twenty four small urban, um, street project, the forest street expansion and the Valley View number one development projects. Tonight, we're focusing on the small urban, um, project because there are some time constraints that we need to get going on that project. And additionally, the forest, street and Valley View developments are within the NIA and we have to take that recommendation for that engineering work to that board prior to coming here. So, um, we received five bids, uh, from local engineering firms. And the low bidder for the small urban project was ENG out of Lansing. We have worked with them previously on several projects, including last year, the South Kalamazoo Avenue, um, paving project. Uh, they also, uh, did some renderings for us on a beautification for South Kalamazoo Ave. Uh, and also East, East Prospect, a water main replacement last year, as well as Leggett Road reconstruction. Previous to that, they also worked with us on West, um, West and East Prospect, Prospect improvements in, uh, the summer of twenty two. Uh, they are very familiar with MDOT work. They did our small urban project in twenty one on Mansion uh, Street, East Drive and North Drive. And uh, so we are very comfortable, uh, recommending them for award tonight on the twenty four small urban project. I'm happy to take questions, uh, if you have any.
Can you just state the amount of the bid?
I can. Thank you. Um, we're asking for an award, uh, contract for two thousand and twenty four small urban design engineering in the amount of forty five thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty cents with a contingency of four thousand, two hundred and ninety nine dollars and forty cents for a total funded amount of forty nine thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars.
Thank you.
Is Valley View the Mann Road project?
Correct.
Just checking.
Yep. Trying to get aligned on the developers' names for it.
And is this, this is street fund dollars or?
Correct. Major street fund dollars. The small urban program is an MDOT grant program where, um, we get, uh, approximately three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to do, uh, repairs, rehab to our streets, um, on a rotating basis and we rotate with, uh, Calhoun County, uh, for the funding. So they had, uh, the funding last year, actually the work last year that was done on Old Twenty Seven, north of North Drive was their small urban project.
And this will be reimbursed to the city when the NIA binds it, bonds it? Is that how that's going?
Uh, well, this is specifically the street funds.
Okay.
We're not, we're not awarding anything with the NIA funds yet because I haven't taken it to the NIA board.
Okay.
But I did, I, I bid it all as one pro, as one to make it efficient from a bidding standpoint.
Okay, thanks.
So I will be coming back to you for the other projects listed in the report, the Valley View, number one and, um, Forest Street Extension after I go to the NIA board later this.
The, Marguerite, the small urban project is Verona Road and West Drive, correct?
Correct.
Close. And that's what we're approving tonight, just the engineering services for that, just that project alone.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll take a motion to approve the bid for ENG Lansing in the amount of forty five thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty cents and contingency of four thousand, two hundred and ninety nine dollars and what were the forty cents? Um, the engineering contract for West Drive and Verona Road.
So moved?
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Wolfersberger, supported by Councilmember Chaney Huggett. We'll call a vote, please.
Member Traver?
Yes.
Member Underhill?
Yes.
Member Wolfersberger?
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Member Chaney Huggett?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to item twelve B, purchase of conductor and cable for major site expansion. Um,
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The electric department is tasked to extend out the electric feeder out to the major site. And so we have been, uh, working on the design of that with the help of GRP engineering. We've secured, uh, the wooden poles, which were actually delivered last week. Um, associated line hardware has all been ordered. The transformers were, uh, ordered in November. They should be in and around April. And so we needed to put out for bid the conductor and cable. And so we received seven, um, bids. And to meet the timeline, we're going to cherry pick it from different, um, vendors. So we would like to go with Resco out of Mount Pleasant, Michigan for the aluminum and copper. They were the low bids on the project. And then the, um, seven ninety five Drake, which is the overhead conductor. We would like to buy that from Power Line Supply out of Reed City, Michigan. They were the second lowest bidder by tw- um, twenty seven cents more per foot. However, they can ship it immediately. And this project obviously has a major time, uh, sensitivity to it. And so we can start building that overhead line immediately while we wait for the rest of the underground, uh, materials to come in. So we are asking for, um, an award of forty thousand dollars and forty thousand, fifty dollars to Reed City Power Line Supply. And then, uh, for the copper underground, it would be an award of four hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred dollars. And then the aluminum cable would be thirty two thousand, six hundred and twenty five dollars. We're asking you to award this on a per foot cost so that as engineering might slightly change if we need to zig rather than zag as this is a a living, breathing project, um, that if we need to order more cable, we can do so at that square foot price, or excuse me, per foot price. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
It is a complex, uh, motion, but if you look at the report under the recommendation, we've tried to lay it out as easy as possible for you.
Any questions? This is to take our electric across sixty nine over to, um, towards a major
Correct. Correct. We would be boring underground sixty nine.
Can you use the casings? Thank you. All right.
I thought there was a tunnel.
Yeah, that's what I thought. There was an opening, but we won't be using it.
Uh, my understanding is there, there is two existing casings. Uh, my, again, we won't be utilizing those for this electrical project, but they are available maybe for some other utilities, although based on the designs, I think they're undersized, so.
I'll take a motion to approve the purchase of fifteen thousand feet of seven ninety five Drake ACSR conductor at two dollars and sixty seven feet from Power Line Supply Reed City, Michigan at an estimated cost of forty thousand, fifty dollars. Twenty two thousand, five hundred feet of five hundred MCM copper cable at eighteen at eighteen dollars and sixty eight cents a foot from Rusko Distribution, Distributing of Mount Pleasant, Michigan at an estimated cost of four hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred dollars and seven thousand, five hundred feet of one.
One ought.
What is it?
One ought.
One ought, aluminum cable at four dollars and thirty five cents a foot from Rusko uh, Distributing of Mount Pleasant, Michigan at an, at a estimated cost of thirty two thousand, six hundred and twenty five dollars.
Slow move. Support.
A motion by council member Traver, supported by council member Underhill. Clerk, please call the roll.
Member Wolfersberger.
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz.
Yes.
Member Chaney Huggett.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Member Underhill.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Christie. Uh, brings us to item twelve C, um, power plant units number two and number four, oxidation catalyst installation. Kevin.
Good evening again. Um, I think uh, council and mayor are familiar with this project. We've discussed it a few times. Uh, we're at the point uh, now where we have to make a decision whether to move forward on installation of these oxidation catalysts. You know, this is a project that's gonna cost us probably about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but it also has about a twelve month payback for us. And so it's the most expedient and least cost addition of capacity that we can get. Plus, we get two megawatts more backup generation out of it, so. We've applied for the permit to install with Eagle, had a teleconference with them today. They didn't really have any questions about um, what we're proposing here, so. We're on a timeline to be able to get this completed by June first, which is the start of MISO's new capacity here. So if we don't get it done by June first, then we likely have to wait another year before we would start seeing the cost savings on it. So. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any comments, questions by council?
We're basically buying some big catalytic converters for a couple of big generators.
Mm-hmm. And, and these units are there at the plant. They ceased operating them in twenty fifteen when the decision was made at that time not to equip them with a oxidation catalyst, which we did with the other three units. At this point, the capacity cost uh, makes it affordable to do this and to get more backup. There's not a, a dime of debt on either one of these units. They're ready to go if we move forward with it.
Is there any concern uh, with the lifetime expectancy of these units?
They, no.
Okay.
No, these things, of course, one of them, I think, is a nineteen forty two and the other one's a nineteen fifty three. And uh, they're low speed diesels and they can run on natural gas, unit two can anyway. But when uh, folks come to help us with these tests, they say these are forever engines. As long as you take care of them and you can get parts for them, they could run forever, so. And we've tested them, um, had to to collect the exhaust data that we needed to design the catalyst. And so we've got some runtime on them even since.
And the likelihood of actually having to run these is pretty low, correct? However, we have the capacity.
Yeah, we don't have to run them for, if MISO asks us to run them. And I think we've been called upon twice in two years to do that.
Good.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, twelve month R O I just, I mean, kind of just makes sense. I mean, that's a, that's a quick payback for um, for the expense, so.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And if we get it done by June, then we'll start saving money June of this year.
That'll take a recommendation, recommendation to approve an agreement was Precision Energy Services of West Burlington, Iowa to design, manufacture, and install oxidation catalysts and emissions monitoring equipment for the City of Marshall Power Plant Units Number Two and Number Four at a not to exceed cost of a hundred and fifty thousand and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents. Motion by council member Wolfersberger, supported by council member Underhill. Roll call, vote please.
Member Chaney Huggett. Member Traver. Member Underhill. Member Wolfersberger. Mayor Schwartz. And carries.
To item twelve D, uh, cat peeking project interconnection and lease agreements.
They're agreements with American Municipal Power. All installing four, two and a half megawatt caterpillar natural gas in the city. And uh, they will be placed one in our south substation, three in our power plant two next to unit number six. So they will be occupying city property necessa- necess- necessitating, there we go, a lease agreement to allow amp to occupy that space. And then they will be interconnected into our electric distribution system. So we also have to have an agreement covering that interconnection. So there's two of each of those because we've got two different locations that these units are gonna be on the power plant campus. But there's no cost associated with this. Council enacted the power sales contract July of last year. These two parts of it were left blank pending getting them, leaving them together.
Thank you. Questions or concerns by council?
I'm just, sure I know the answer, but I'm assuming Attorney Revor was involved in drafting this.
You'd uh, all four of these documents.
I'll take a motion to approve the attached AMP Michigan Cat Peaking Project Lease and Interconnection Agreements with American Municipal Power, Inc. and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents. Motion by council member Traver, supported by council member Chaney Huggett. Um, we'll do a roll call, please.
Member Underhill. Member Wolfersberger.
Yes.
Yes.
Chaney Huggett.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Thank you. Appreciate your support. I think usually some exciting things happening.
That brings us to item twelve E, Fire Code Ordinance Amendment. Chief.
This time, you do that in, did you? Yes, Your Honor and Council, again, um, I've been working on this for a couple of years now. Wanted to change from being uh, uh, National Fire Protection Association codes because there's so many of them. One, one oh one, there's all kinds. Um, some of my contacts have recommended the International Fire Code. So I started looking into that, uh, part of what the International Fire Code does for us is uh, disciplineality is, is closely mirrored to the building uh, code book that they use also. So got with the uh, Attorney Revor and we looked at this and he has several of those several of those municipalities that have used this. So again, this brings us up to updated one, twenty twenty one is the most current I F C code out there that we can use. So recommend uh, adopting this to be with uh, our inspector we use for his uh, fire inspections.
Counsel, questions or discussion?
We do have a copy of the I F C if any of you.
It's good to know. Um, I, I guess I'm curious if this needs to be aligned with uh, planning commission or owning ordinance, anything of that nature. Um, so is there any crossover or, or um, any, anything that might trigger requirements in, in other areas of code?
I don't think it has any crossover in any other codes. It kind of just, the one that our building inspectors use and them, you know, that's the same company that writes those books. They're called, again, it referenced the N F P A so much, you're not gonna get away from that. Again, part of this is too, there's a conflict between we go with the most restrictive on it. There's something that the I F C will say, look up N F P A twenty. So it gives you that. So not gonna totally get away from N F P A, but this is, this is a little easier way it flows with uh, our inspectors for doing their inspection and with the building inspector. Well, I know sometimes Tim is down there doing a building inspection. Sometimes he got a call, he has a reading N F P A where he knows how it reads in I F C, so. I, I think this will be a much better process.
Thanks, Chief.
So then also we're updating it to the most current available.
Twenty twenty four is the next time that it's supposed to be rise, which is this year, and then take another year or two before it becomes that we can adopt it.
Right. Questions? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh one and ordinance to amend the City of Marshall Code of Ordinances pursuant to the authorization set forth in section three K of the Michigan Home Rule Cities Act. M C L one one seven point three adopts the International Fire Code twenty twenty one edition published by the International Code Council as a fire code for the City of Marshall and to set a public hearing for March fourth, twenty twenty four.
Some move. Support.
Have a motion by council member Wolfersberger, supported by council member Underhill. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Same sign. Motion carries. That brings us to item twelve F. Um, fire protection and emergency services cost recovery, fire inspection ordinance amendment. Chief.
Yes, Your Honor and Council, again, we talked about this in a work session, oh, probably uh, over a year ago about, hey, inspections costs, there's a cost to them. And also we had an ordinance where we could do some cost recovery for um, say, non-taxpaying of that comes to cause the incident, such as if we have a, God forbid, a train derailment or hazard uh, hazardous material uh, vendor coming through. We had to spend a lot of hours on something like that. There's a way to have that cost recovery. That's kind of, uh, we talked a little bit about it, but then I, we had some stuff that went to the hazardous mitigation plan that you adopted with the emergency manager. And so he was recommending to municipalities to make sure you update your cost recovery codes. And so funny thing was, before I could send it to Attorney Revor, it must be, it's going on all over. He sent me the, hey, what do you think about this ordinance and, and going with this? So again, it goes out and brings us to um, uh, current on how we can recover our costs. Again, we talked about uh, doing the fire inspections and, you know, we calculated in our records management system how long an inspection actually takes. Then, you know, uh, plan that cost to uh, to the businesses instead of just always having to um, come from just the tax base in, in the budget. So it's a way to uh, generate some uh, fiscal uh, financing for the fire department.
Now, does this only for businesses, operating as a business? What about nonprofits or churches or, how, how will this work for that?
Yes, we, I, again, we don't normally inspect a, a church per se. Um, but we do like uh, the schools and the hospital. We do have that there. They used to be hospitals and schools are all done under uh, from the State Fire and Inspection Division, but they no longer do that on an annual basis. They only do it if they've been a new build or have a enough of a, a remodel construction that, that they'll come in and inspect it. They leave it up to the authority having jurisdiction and there's no um, delineation between whether they're nonprofit or not, so. Right now, we don't inspect churches, but again, we, we got it into like low hazard storage units, your small offices, your mercantile, your assemblies, um, your maintenance facilities, some large business offices, uh, multi-family residence, some of the apartments, even though we can only, and we can't inspect individual apartments, we can inspect the common areas and those that make sure they're, you know, there's some things we can inspect on those. Of course, our hotels and then our industrial facilities, uh, hospitals and schools is kind of how we got them break, broke down. So we're, you know, a low hazard unit is about one and a half hours and, you know, needs it every three years. And that's about a hundred and eighty five dollar charge for that inspection taken there. Wages and benefits and plus some of the, you know, we had to bill him, we had to go through finance to bill it and stuff. Now, we have to industrial facilities that, you know, we want to do these annually. And, you know, those take on average of five hours, so that's a six hundred and twenty five dollar charge there. Um, where we did a little bit differently is, again, where our historic downtown that we're so concerned about, you know, what my inspector going through there a couple of times a year. But we're not gonna charge every couple of times. It's not fair to um, uh, if they were a standalone business, it would be every three years. You know, we want to do that because they're so interconnected down, downtown. We want to keep up on it. It's the best way to keep our community the safest. We want to be pretty proactive.
Thank you. Any other questions, counsel? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh two and ordinance to amend the City of Marshall Code of Ordinances pursuant to the authorization set forth in section three K of the Michigan Home Rule Cities Act. M C L one one seven point three, Public Act thirty three of nineteen fifty one. M C L forty one point eight zero six A. M C L forty one point eight one zero subsection two A. To delete emergency fire department services charges to establish fire protection and emergency service cost recovery, fire inspections, and amend city code section ninety five dash fifteen to repeal any ordinance inconsistent therewith and to provide an effective date thereof to set a public hearing for March fourth.
Some move.
Support.
Motion by council member Wolfersberger, supported by council member, member Chaney Huggett. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
That brings us to item fourteen, public comment on agenda items, uh, non-agenda items, I'm sorry. Persons addressing city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of two minutes. Anybody wishing to speak on non-agenda items? Yes, ma'am.
I feel pretty uh, insignificant given all the big numbers and everything you guys are talking about because this is just about a little bit of parking on my street. I wanted to um, make the north side of Hart Street a no parking zone. One of the benefits from COVID is that I've been able to sit at home doing my private practice and looking out the window and watching cars and.
And can I just?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Laura Crowe. And I'm at one, two, four Hart Street. And I'm sorry, I should have put a note to do that. Um, so sitting at home doing a private practice, I'm watching a lot of cars and, and feral cats, by the way, but that's not what I'm here for. Um, and one of the things I noticed is that Hart Street is a lot thinner than some of the other streets around town. And over the course of the last three or four years, um, some of the folks have grown up and have gotten cars on the street, which is great. Um, however, they tend to park on the street, which makes it a lot harder to get up and down the street, especially if they're parked on both sides of the street. Um, it, one of the things I've noticed is that um, some of the city uh, street cleaning, the snow removal, the leaf removal, things like that has been kind of more difficult for the folks doing that. The other thing I noticed is that a lot of us on the north side of the street are elderly. I'm not as elderly as some of them, but most of us are elderly over there. And so it's hard to see around some of these cars as we're pulling out of driveways. And I've seen more than my fair share of near misses as people pull out of driveways trying to see. And so I noticed, oh, gosh, sorry. And so I noticed, oh, gosh, sorry. Sorry about that. Yeah, it's about the parking. I'm requesting a no parking on the north side of Hart Street. Thank you.
Very well, item six twenty-two, West Green Street. On May first. At the long meeting. Where the illegal rezoning happened, uh. The supposed decision was, uh. Based on the pivotal input of the mayor waving some letters around saying, I've got a hundred and eight. Letters, uh, for the rezoning. I've got nine letters against the rezoning. However, after finally obtaining, uh, copies of the letters. It wasn't a hundred and seventeen letters. It was a hundred and twenty-five letters, and it wasn't nine letters against the rezoning. It was twenty-one letters against the rezoning. And of people who actually identified themselves as Marshall residents. Uh, who were for the rezoning, that was seventeen. Uh. There were twenty-two, uh, letters for the rezoning from people who were not constituents. They were, you know, the president of Albion College, the mayor of Battle Creek. Fine, they have an opinion, but. You people were voted in by your constituents. Those are the people you need to listen to. Uh, so there were a total of thirty-nine, uh, letters that were actually written by people. Uh, that were for the rezoning. However, there were sixty-five letters. Of, at sixty-five copies of one letter. The same letter sixty-five times, same copy and paste text. Uh, the text was, uh, looked like it was written by an advertiser for. Magazine copy. Uh, and, uh, filled in with chicken scratches for names. Over half of the letters in the packet. Now, that's supposed to be the deciding decision on, uh, you know, it's evidence of constructive fraud. Gave it to the committee.
Thank you. That brings us to item fifteen, council and manager communication. Oh, anybody else wishing to speak?
Yes, sir.
Mayor and council, just wanted to bring to your attention, uh, um, Martin Erskine, eighty-three oh two Robbins Lane, fire chief of Marshall. Uh, last week, um, I forget which exact date it is, uh, I was at work towards the end of my day and, uh. Tones went off for unknown accident up here on Kalamazoo by Prairie. So again, we in emergency services know that most of the time, unknown accident in that area. Usually at low speed and even though it's, and there ends up being more of a fender bender. So we responded, Captain Nash was, his crew was on that day, and we responded up there. On the way there, we get updated information from dispatch that we have, uh, one patient and he's extricated that is agonal breathing, which is barely breathing. And that there was a handgun notice on the floorboard of the car. So our unknown accident quickly became, uh, MCI mass casualty incident and also ended up being a crime scene. Uh, more details later, cars, uh, pit moved, uh, one car and threw them into the, um, northbound lane where they were a T-bone on the passenger side. I would tell you, I was pretty proud that day of a chief of, of watching our emergency responders, how they handled that incident. The time they got on there, Captain Nash took over, uh, operations of the fire service. I kind of. Captain Park showed up off duty, uh, took charge of the extrication, and Lieutenant Riggs was on duty that day too. Him and Captain Nash worked together. On incidents, our, uh, PD Officer Hug, Officer Karas, and Sergeant Powder showed up, immediately took, uh. Uh, safety of the scene, controlled the crowd, controlled the traffic, secured the handgun. Our, uh, MAFSA showed up hearing that it was going to be a patient, they thought it's a patient, but they showed up with three analysts, with three of their better paramedics. And knew what they had. We had two very critical patients and one very serious. Um, uh, patient, and we had them extricated out of the vehicle in a little over twenty minutes on the way to the hospital, all three of them. We did what we call in our, made a rapid, uh, extrication on them, means get them out as quick as we can because their. Uh, life is dependent on them more than it caused further injuries, which was totally the right call. Um, one was treated and released, uh, other two are still in intensive care, but. A great job by our emergency services to make you guys aware. Thank you.
That brings us to item fourteen, public comment on agenda, or I'm sorry, item fifteen on council and manager communications. Councilmember Underhill. Councilmember Traver.
Just want to say that it's nice to see Marguerite back again. We've seen her since she's been back to work, so welcome back and congratulations.
Member Wolfersberger?
Uh, I'll just say thank you, Chief, for, uh, letting us know more information about that. I know there's lots of, uh, rumors and innuendo going around, so. Um, great to hear the response from our, from our. Uh, thanks to all of them, please. Uh, and also let's like, uh, circle back and comment on our, on our. Um, purchase of our, um, bucket truck, uh, and thank the city, city staff, um. For what could have been a bad situation and turned that into, you know, a cost savings, uh, situation for the, for the city. That's fantastic. Um, just great work all around, yeah. Um, and. I think that's it.
Councilmember Chaney Huggett?
Me tonight. Thank you.
You.
Thank you. I, I have nothing more.
You want to e- enter a letter?
Did receive an email. What we'll do is we'll provide that in the, uh, the next packet as part of the packet. We received a, yeah, email from Rick Sadler. It's.
Clerk?
Thank you.
Ice, Wine and Blues was this past, uh, weekend, uh, very good turnout for that. The weather was actually cooperative. Um, it wasn't really cold and good turnout for that. Um, again, thank you, Chief, uh, for your response and working well with all the different agencies. Um, I was listening to the incident as it's taking place. Helicopters and weather conditions and, you know, it ended up being that they could transport quicker. And instead of waiting for the chopper to arrive and, and. Please to know that I can rely on that as a citizen here as well. Thank you. Um, that being said, I take a motion to adjourn. Wolfersburgers, or by Councilmember Traver, these, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Meeting is adjourned.